Good evening. This is an informal meeting of the Gardner City Council on Tuesday, June 21st, 2022. We are meeting informally tonight to discuss the city's FY 2023 budget proposed by Mayor Nicholson. As in years past, we will go page by page through the budget packet that is included in our meeting packet this evening. For the public watching this evening, I'd like to begin by sharing information about the city's budget process up to this point. After meeting with city department heads, many of them more than once, and communicating with our city auditor, John Richard, who is also here this evening, Mayor Nicholson presented the city council with his city budget recommendations on Friday, May 27th. His proposed budget also became available to the public that day on the city's website. The city council and the public then had the opportunity to review the budget and contact the mayor with questions. Since then, the city council, finance, public safety, public service, and public welfare standing committees have met with city department heads from the departments under each committee and Mayor Nicholson during their standing committee meetings for further study of the budget and answers to questions. Those standing committee meetings are available on the City of Gardner's YouTube channel. This evening, the city council is meeting as a whole committee to review and discuss the mayor's budget recommendations. As I said, Mayor Nicholson and city auditor John Richard are here to assist with information and answer questions. The city council has the authority to cut line items from their proposed city budget with the exception of the school department, where the city council can cut only from the bottom line of the school department's proposed budget. Other than that, the city council has the authority to cut line items from city departments. So just some procedural information here, just reminders for the council, we will begin on page one of the budget packet. As we go through the budget, one thing I'd like to bring to the council's attention is when referring to a particular line item within the budget, please use the line number all the way to the left of the page. So for example, on page one, line number six under city council is communications. Those line numbers are unique to each line, and they make it most convenient to follow along. I would like to begin with Mayor Nicholson giving an overview of the budget he has proposed. Mayor Nicholson?
Thank you, Madam President. The budget that's proposed before you is at $74,851,841, and that does include all of our enterprise funds, school spending, and general government costs. This does reflect about a 5.9% increase in the city's budget. However, that is, when compared to other municipalities near us, the lowest in the North Quavon region for a municipality our size, with Fitchburg having a 7.25% increase in their budget and Leominster a 9.9% increase of the $74.8 million. $31.2 million of that is coming from local property taxes. That does fall within the limits of Proposition 2.5 as required by state statute, and there are no overrides associated with this budget proposal before us, with the remaining difference coming from our local receipts and state aid. Our Chapter 70 aid from the Commonwealth did go up about $2.4 million, which was larger than last year by about $1.9 million that we saw in last year's increase that we received. Aside from that, anything that we say falls to the general fund, falls under what we call local receipts in our budgeting process for our revenue. As we budget these, what we traditionally done in the past is take 96% of the previous three years' actuals, including in the previous year's budget, to get a more conservative number there. We don't know what motor vehicle excise tax will come in at, so what we do is we take the previous three years of actuals in the budget year, add that up, and take 96% of what that number would be, and that's what we budget for in terms of revenue there. That does fluctuate depending on where you are. So for instance, when we were in the Great Recession, whatever was budgeted seemed to come underneath in motor vehicle excise taxes. However, that 96 percentile tends to be good in what our budgeting practices are, have been since then, and more accurate in what we're seeing there. And if money does come in higher than what's budgeted for, that does just fall to free cash in the end. So whenever we say something falls to the general fund, that all gets piled into that local receipts category that's there, and then falls to free cash at the end of the year if it comes in higher than what's expected. There are no city side positions included in the annual budget that you see before you. However, there are a couple positions in the school department that are added that was presented by Dr. Pellegrino when he did the school budget presentation a couple years ago. There are three positions that are seeing a slightly higher than 2% increase in the salary line items that are here, and that's the city auditor position, the human resources director, and the assistant city solicitor. In terms of the city auditor, we're looking to bring that position in line with what the city treasurer is making right now, because that position is very equivalent to the amount of work that's been doing them. They both deal with the school department rather than just the city side of things, and the amount of work is comparable when you look at the financial side of what those two positions are doing for both the city and the schools. The personnel director, back when that position took over both the school department's personnel records keeping and onboarding process of employees, and took that away from the previous position that Ms. Irene Woodard had at the school department, there was no additional adjustment made at that time, nor was there when that position took over, the Greenwood pools oversight in 2014. So this is looking at doing what we've done with several other department heads, like the IT director or other departments, where when they've taken over additional departments, there's been a compensation adjustment to that position, so that's why that has been added there. And then with the assistant city solicitor, looking at the different legal requirements that have been added to positions in terms of reviewing different records requests that I receive, particularly in response to the Police Reform Act of 2020 that took effect this year. To put this into perspective, in calendar 20, we received 2,571 public records requests, and 21, 2,395 public records requests total in that calendar year. And the year-to-date number of public records requests that the city has received so far is 2,547. So we're at the full amount that we received in calendar year 2020 in just six months in this calendar year so far, with the majority of those being from the police department, all but, I think, 560 of those requests coming in as a result of the Police Reform Bill. Those are things that have to be reviewed by legal counsel, by statute, as there are just things of sensitive nature in police reports, particularly with, let's say, domestic violence call that's exempt from police public record and things of that nature there, too. Alongside that, the assistant solicitor's also taken on a more active role in reviewing the different items that come before the city council, so nothing's been sent to the city council in the past year and a half that hasn't first been reviewed by the city solicitor's office. So that is a consideration of the added duties for that position that is there, too. Aside from those positions, everyone else is receiving a 2% cost of living adjustment for all non-union employees that is associated in this budget and in the compensation schedule ordinance that has been presented to the city council as well. In terms of the positions that have a split compensation, like the director of public works, the city engineer, the city health director, those positions receive compensation from several different line items in the city. Those are allocated for and shown more clearly in the compensation schedule ordinance that gets voted on after the budget is adopted. Those are all included there, and other than that, it seems really just union contractual items or different increases due to just cost increases that we're seeing across the board, and Auditor Richard and I are happy to answer any questions. We first reached out to the department heads for their sending out the request for them to submit their proposals on Friday, December 3rd, 2021. Those were due to my office on Monday, January 24th, and then the week of February 7th, we met one-on-one with every department head, and then the budget was amended and adjusted as the new local aid packages were released from the governor's budget and the House budget moving forward from there. So that's how this budget was drafted. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor Nicholson. Okay, we will begin with page one, line items numbers one through 50. The city council, mayor, and city auditor departments, I have nothing to report from the finance committee as chair. Is there any questions or comments from the council about any of the items on page Line numbers 51 through 105, the purchasing, assessors, and city treasurer departments, I have nothing to report or comment on from the finance committee. Are there any questions or comments from the council about any of the items on page Okay, page three. Line numbers 106 through 160, the law, personnel, and information technology, and city clerk. I have nothing to add or report from the finance, Council Walsh?
Yes, I just had a question based upon the mayor's explanation of the reason for the added duties associated with the additional increase in compensation for the personnel director. I'm wondering, one of the major reasons had to do with the work that she does for the school department. Is that accurate?
Yes, that is correct.
Shouldn't, like we do with other departments, share the cost of that with the school department?
We could do that, council. That is something we certainly could do. I think it was just to try to get a clearer picture in the budget document itself as to what the positions make, but you are correct, that could be reflected in the compensation schedule.
We do it with a number of other positions where they, like, different enterprise accounts that get split up. And that way, if the reason for the added expense is associated with that work, then it makes sense that they share that expense.
Sure, that makes sense.
Well, maybe for next time.
Yes, we'll mark that down, for sure.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
On that same thing, we don't split off the auditor's work or the treasurer's work, or even the law department's work in that sense. However, if I'm not mistaken, that should be taken into account when we determine net school spending, the proportion of her.
Yes, so to answer your question, counselor, those do fall into the net school spending category as the indirect cost. So while they are not budgeted in a line item that says city auditor salary or something like that, there's a line item that says indirect cost, and if you break that down into its sub-line items, it has a portion of the auditor, a portion of the treasurer, a portion of the systems manager because of the munis side of the school department, so it is budgeted in those sections, so that is correct.
So I would assume that we...
Personnel is not included in that category?
Not in that this year, correct.
At this time.
At this time.
But it should be.
Yeah.
Should count towards our net school spending, yeah. Thank you.
Further, Counselor Matt?
Just for organizational purposes, was, who decided to take it out of the school payroll clerk and bring it into city hall? Was it mutual?
The previous administration.
The previous?
Yeah. That took place when Ms. Clemens was superintendent. She requested that of Mayor Hocken at the time, and that is when that went forward.
Any further questions, comments on page three, line items 102 through 152? Okay, page four. Line items 153 through 203, departments, city clerk, election registration, license commission, and conservation commission. I have no, nothing to report for election registration from the finance committee. Counselors Cormier, Walsh, or Bujah? Counsel Walsh?
On behalf of the public service committee, we reviewed the conservation commission budget. No recommendations for cuts.
Thank you.
We're good, thank you.
Counsel Bujah, thank you. Any questions, comments from the council? Page five. Line items 204 through 254, the planning board, zoning board, community development, and city hall maintenance. I have no cuts or anything to report from the finance committee on community development. Counsel Bujah or Counselor Cormier? Your committees?
Uh...
Any? Nothing, anything to report?
Mine start on 40, well, yeah, they are, sorry. City Hall maintenance. On behalf of the public service, we have nothing to recommend.
Thank you.
And the public welfare committee reviewed the planning board and has no changes or recommendations at this time.
Thank you, counselor. Any further questions, comments from the council on page five? Page six. Line items 255 through 305, the cable commission, mayors unclassified, and police. I have no cuts to report from mayors unclassified. Mayor Nicholson?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to clear up something I misspoke on earlier. There is one-fourth position that's receiving higher than a 2% in the budget here, and that's the assistant director of the cable commission. You'll notice that has an increase there. It is a level fund. When you look at the bottom line number, what it is, is that position has taken on extra duties due to the city's recording of extra meetings in terms of the YouTube channel, additional programming that's been added to the cable department's programs as well. Basically, what it is, is we had such a big investment last year when we did that large retained earnings order to purchase new equipment. We won't need to purchase as much new equipment moving forward for the next at least 10 years. So we took that $5,000 out of the new equipment line item and moved that up into the assistant director's line item to adjust for the active duties that are there, but maintain a same amount that was requested in terms of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Nicholson. Counsel Walsh?
On the cable commission, on that topic, as I recall, the department head teaches also at the high school.
That has not happened in the past five years since he doesn't have a certification. The Department of Education would not allow that anymore.
So there's nothing that the personnel in the cable commission is doing on behalf of the...
Of the school department?
The school department that would justify a similar split than...
No, they're just housed in the high school, but they're no longer allowed to teach.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Further, Counsel Bujah?
Public welfare committee met with the police, with the cable commission, and the department head did a good job of explaining what they do. They operate well within their means, and truly during the pandemic, were able to provide a wonderful service. The assistant director, or whatever we call him, Matt, is working above his pay grade, and I'm happy to see that he's getting the recognition he deserves. All in all, they're doing great, and it was great to hear from them last week. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Further questions, comments from the council? Counsel Cormier?
Just on behalf of the public safety, during our meeting with the mayor, he was able to satisfactorily answer any questions we had regarding the police budget. It is a large budget, and there were a lot of numbers that had changed, but they're mostly contractual, have to do with civil service changes as well as educational credits, so we were satisfied, and we don't recommend any changes.
Thank you, Counsel Cormier. Further questions, comments on page six? Moving on to page seven, line numbers 306 through 356. Counsel Craig Cormier, anything from the fire, anything to report from public safety for the fire department budget?
Similar to police, most of the figures are contractual, and again, everything was explained satisfactorily. We have no recommendations of changes to make.
Thank you, counselor. Questions, comments from the council? Counsel Walsh?
Yes, I'm wondering, as I recall, as I understand it, the city is in current contract negotiations with the union at the fire department. Is that correct? What is the status of that in general terms?
Thank you, counselor. The fire department union is the only union we still have left to fully sign the agreement. We are still in negotiations with that. I expect them to be done soon. However, this that's in the budget now does reflect a 2% cost of living adjustment that we expect to go forward with that union contract.
Which categories of personnel are included in the union? Is that the captains, the privates, and the lieutenant?
Yes, the captains, the privates, the lieutenants. Yes, the captains, privates, and lieutenants, yes. The senior clerk is in a different union that is in the AFSME city hall union, which is settled already.
That's been resolved?
That's been resolved, yes.
And so, you're proposing to fund increases in the, that would be associated with a new contract that hasn't been completed yet?
That is correct, because we expect that to be the amount based on how negotiations have gone, but that is correct.
And the reason I bring this up is that there's only one occasion that the council has the opportunity to review for purposes of consideration, the union contract, and that is when it needs to be funded. Right now, that contract is incomplete, but it's been being partially funded already in advance before we have the opportunity to review the funded version of it. So I'm wondering whether it's wise to improve money for the next year's budget as well as the money that's on our proposed, on our agenda for later tonight, $65,000 to fund a 2% increase in this year's budget? Whether it's wise to do that before the contract is completed and we have a chance to review it as the entirety? You may recall that we had that opportunity, some of you may recall we had that opportunity two years ago, a little over two years ago, when two process of, difficult process of negotiation, an extended one, we were left with a huge amount to fund, I think two years of previous increases in hundreds of thousands of dollars, as I recall. I do recall it because I was the acting mayor at the time, they had to send the money to order up here to do it, and I didn't like doing it at that time, but I had to at the time. Don't have to now. This covers fire and ambulance?
Ambulance is allocated in the next section of the budget, but that would also include the privates paid as well there. There are also other line items, just in the sake of transparency, counselor, that do relate to these increases. That's the overtime, holiday pay, college credits, collateral jobs, educational incentive, and sick leave incentive, and then the ambulance budget, overtime, holiday pay, and collateral jobs. So in the fire department, this would allocate for $53,475.66, and in the ambulance budget, $11,105.38.
Well, I'm going to propose that for the fire department, we cut that amount so that when it is finalized, and it is in writing and it is signed off subject to appropriation, that we have the opportunity to review it at that time and decide whether it's, as a contract as a whole, it's in the best interest of the city and worthy of the funding, rather than fund it in advance, and then we have no rollover process, except what we've already done, fund it. So it is, indicates that fire, a proposed salary accounts, that we reduce it by $53,475.66, and we'll get to the end of it. So I'm going to suggest that as a, something to do to retain our ability to review contracts. This the only occasion which you have that opportunity.
Thank you, counselor. Counsel Cormier?
In the event that we did this, because I think we'll probably do a straw vote before we go any further, we, once this is all resolved, and hopefully it'll be resolved quickly, and this is, I won't say much ado about nothing, but an exercise in maintaining our rights, we'll be able to do this under supplemental appropriation long before the tax rate is set.
Yep, so long as we do that before December 31st.
I understand the city auditor will get an additional gray here or two out of this, but so be it for being a Montreal fan.
Why, keep it shady.
But I'll support that, and I would suggest that we could have a straw vote on that.
So we'll take a straw vote on, the amount was $53,000. I'm sorry, Counsel Walsh?
$53,475.66.
I'm sorry.
It's from the bottom line. I don't have the individual line items.
That's okay. You combine all of the different ones together to get the $53,000, correct?
Correct. And the mayor has them.
Yeah, would you like the individual lines, Madam President?
I don't need, no, we don't need the individual line, unless counselors would like the individual line item numbers, but we have them, so...
I think that's an odd thing. I will commend the mayor, before we do have a straw vote, on providing us with the clarity and transparency in this particular issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this would be a reduction, if I may, Madam President?
Yep.
In the salary and labor money order? All of it?
Was that?
All of the different elements?
Yes, that would all fall in your salary and labor.
So the straw vote that we will take now is to reduce the budget by $53,475.66, and that will fall under the salary and labor item that we have, money order that we have to vote on later on tonight in our regular city council meeting. We're just going to take a straw vote right now to see how the council feels about it. So a yes vote will reduce the budget by $53,475.66 from these line items, and no vote will keep the item as is and will not reduce the budget by it. Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Duralowits?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Bujah?
Yes.
Counsel Harden?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so that is 10 yeses on that vote, and zero noes. Any further questions, comments, discussions on page seven?
Madam President?
Counsel Tyros?
If I may ask Mr. Mayor, what level of confidence do you have that those negotiations will be wrapped up relatively quickly? Is there something holding them up?
No, no, it's just a, it's been a process going back and forth since the beginning of the fiscal year. I do expect them to be wrapped up soon, in which case we'd come back before the council for supplemental budgets. You're welcome.
Further questions, comments from the council on page seven? Page eight?
Ambulance.
Line numbers 350, I'm sorry. Counsel Walsh?
Yes, under ambulance, for the reasons I, without going through it again, the ambulance budget contains excess funds beyond what the current contract provides for of $11,105.38. So I propose, for the same reasons as in the fire department, that we reduce their budget by $11,105.38. Thirty-eight, thirty-eight cents.
I'd like, if any comments, questions on that, because I'd like to take a straw vote on that as well, please.
Madam President?
Mayor Nicholson?
Thank you. Just for the sake of clarity, the way that we divide up our fire department personnel is the eight most junior firefighters are allocated in the ambulance budget, and the remaining firefighters are allocated in the fire department budget. That's because the revenue from the ambulance account fully funds those most eight junior positions, so as we add people, some of those move up into the fire department budget, or as staffing changes, that's when those two go between the two there. So that's how those are allocated and why they're in two separate budget lines. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Walsh?
I might just add that an additional reason, we have an audit that's being done of operations in the fire department, and I think it would be wise for us to have the benefit of that report when it's done, when we finally vote on the contract when it's completed.
Thank you, counselor. Further questions, comments? We're going to take a straw vote on the proposed cut of $11,105.38. A yes vote is to reduce the budget by that amount, and no vote is to keep the item as is. Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Duralowits?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Bujah?
Yes.
Counsel Harden?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Counsel Ron Cormier?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so that would be 10 yeses and zero noes on that straw vote. Further questions, comments on page eight? Page nine? Line items 408 to 458?
I just...
Counsel Mack?
I just have a question on the dispatch salary line 419, excuse me, 420, on the increase of $157,000. increase of $157,351 in the salaries from.
Thank you very much, Counselor. If you'll notice, we zeroed out line item 419, the dispatch supervisor salaries and wages. I do want to clarify, because this question was asked of the Public Safety Committee, that is not the dispatch director's salary line item. The previous way that the dispatch center was set up was that it was the director, three supervisor positions, who would do the different collateral jobs of the department, certain grant writing functions, certain reporting functions for the State 911 Department, and then the remaining dispatchers from there. While we were negotiating with the unions at the recommendation of the former director, we negotiated to eliminate the supervisor positions, roll those into the regular dispatch positions, and make those collateral jobs of the other dispatchers, since the supervisors really had no supervisory roles or authorities, and we just really called supervisors, just to delineate a different position there. So working with that union, they are now all just regular dispatchers. In doing so, we were able to take the funding that was allocated up there for the extra stipends that were received as part of being a supervisor position, and roll that out throughout the union, similar to what we did with the DPW, and in doing so, creating those collateral jobs, presented about a 3% increase for the dispatchers that were there as a way to try to entice more people to apply here. Back in January, we only had six of 12 positions full. Right now, we're at about nine, so we are getting back up to close to fully staffed. We do have some positions there, but that was proposed as a way to try to entice people and bring more people into the door so we can fill those positions that are there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counselor. Any further questions, comments on page nine? Page 10? Line 459 through 509, any reports or cuts to suggest from any of the standing committee chairs? Any questions, comments from the city councilors? Page 11? Line 510 through 560, any cuts or to suggest, or any reports from any of the standing committee chairs? Any questions, comments from the council? Counselor Bujo?
As I stated before, the Public Welfare Committee went to Monty Tech for a tour and to discuss the budget. Everything made sense and was justified by their very supportive staff, that, so I'll be supporting those line items here tonight.
Thank you, Counselor. Further questions, comments from the council? Counselor Walsh?
Am I correct that this is a reduced budget allocation for us?
It is. It is.
No wonders never sees.
I'm flabbergasted.
The allocation of students shifted in a particular way, that the number of students from Gardner decreased, and our assessment decreased as a result as well.
Thank you.
Further questions, comments from the councilors? Page 12?
Hi, just one other thing on Survey Department. We met and reviewed the Survey Department. The department head's salary is, is divided between the Survey Department and the Public Works, I think.
Water and Sewer.
Water and Sewer?
Yeah.
That's right. Excuse me. I know it's divided up into three because he works in all three, so two, two parts of it are enterprise, one, this part is not otherwise, but the Service Committee had no recommended cuts to the Survey Department budget.
Thank you, Counselor. Further questions, comments from the councilors? Okay, page 13? Or actually, I'm sorry, that was on page 11. Anything on page 12?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Public Works, in the Public Works Department budget, let me just get my notes here. Public Works account, account number 521, 52038, line item 568, Unaccepted Road Maintenance, the, based upon our discussions with what's being encumbered from exist, from the existing budget, the, and the history of usage of this account, the committee recommends a cut of, in that line item, of $4,000. And in line item 52192, line number 578, the committee recommends cutting $10,000, as the director indicated that the encumbered amount from the, from the existing budget would be more than sufficient for his needs in the coming fiscal year. So he rec, he, he actually recommended that the 10 grand be cut from the budget, or, I don't know if he recommended, he suggested that it, the money he has now would be sufficient for the upcoming year. I think that's the best way to describe it. So I, for, from the Public Works, from those accounts, we recommend cutting $14,000. Four from 52038, 10 from 52192. And I apologize for misquoting the, in my memo, I, I misquoted the account number for the tree planting, but it's 52192 is the actual one. And thank you to the mayor, to the council president for picking up on that.
Well, it's in the expense budget, isn't it?
It's in the expense budget.
The other line item is the Conservation Agents, the salary line.
Right.
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions, comments? I would take a straw vote, so that's $14,000 from Public Works. A yes vote will reduce the budget by $14,000, a no vote will keep the budget as is. Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Durrell Louts?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Bujo?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, that's 10 yeses on that straw vote. Further questions, comments on page 12? Counselor Bujo?
Public Welfare Committee met with the, well, Colin from the mayor's office told us about the airport, and they're operating within their means, and they should be interviewing the part-time department head manager this week. All right, so that's a, a position that is unfilled, but will be filled shortly.
Which department?
That department falls jointly underneath two committees.
Yeah, well, we recommend a cut. The, and the reason for it is this, as Chairman Bujo points out, they're interviewing and they hope to fill the position of, of the manager, but in repairs and maintenance, because there hasn't been a manager, the $11,000 that was appropriated in the current budget was only expended $915, and the, and the mayor indicated that a cut, with the encumbered amount of the remaining balance of that, and a cut of $6,000, would be more than sufficient funds for repairs and maintenance for the coming fiscal year. So the committee voted to recommend a cut in line item 608, account number 52030, a cut of $6,000. That'd be from the expense.
Thank you, Counselor. Questions, comments, before we take a straw vote? So this is on cutting $6,000, line item 608, from the airport budget, yes, we'll cut it, a no, we'll keep it. Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Durrell Louts?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Bujo?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, that's 10 yeses. Any other further questions, comments on page 12? Page 13? Any proposed cuts or comments from the standing committee chairs? Any questions, comments from the council? Okay, page 14? Any questions, comments from the committee chairs, or from the council? This is line 663 through line 713. Okay, page 15? Line 714 through 764, any proposed cuts or comments from the standing committee chairs? Any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Walsh?
Just, I just reported on behalf of the committee that we met with the mayor on recreation, the recreation budget, and we met with Mr. Forty from the School Department on municipal recreation, and do not recommend any salary cuts. The department head's salary is shared between this department and the School Department. So there's some precedent for this kind of-
Yes, there is.
Thank you, Counselor. Further questions, comments? Page 16? Line 765 through 815, questions, I'm sorry, are there any proposed cuts or comments from the standing committee chairs? Any questions, comments from the council? Page 17?
What line items are you on?
Um, page 17, line number 816 through 865. Counselor Walsh?
Under the Sewer Department expense, this is one of the, one of the departments that is, shares the cost of the department head with the Public Works Department, with the Survey Department, excuse me. And we, the committee voted to recommend in line 832, a cut of $5,000 to the overtime account, based upon the history of, of lack of usage of the $20,000, $25,000 appropriated as of the time of this report, under $5,000 had been used, it's going to be encumbered. And so, cut of $5,000, it's hard to know what the need will be, but, but there'll be plenty based upon history, between what's encumbered from this account, as well as a cut of the $20,000 would be the balance left in, in this account. We also voted to recommend in line 835, working out of grade, a cut of $3,000. As you can see, it's, it hasn't been used at all in the recent years. It occurs, for those who may not be familiar with it, when someone is, who is at a lower pay grade, has to do the job of someone from a higher pay grade for a certain amount of time during the course of a, of a day or a week, and they're entitled to get paid at the higher rate. That hasn't occurred in the recent past, but it can occur, it may occur, so we recommend cutting, from the Sewer Department, $3,000 from account number 51102, line item 835. And in line 845, Professional Development Travel, it's budgeted at $10,000. As of the date of this, our report, $732.50 had been used, $20 the year before, $75 the year before, so it's clearly an account that isn't utilized, although we encourage the director and the engineer to utilize it when the, when the occasion arises, the opportunity arises, but we felt under the circumstances that a cut to that item, Professional Development Travel, I, line, item 845, account 52170, a cut of $5,000. So that's a total for the department, their all expense items.
Two salaries.
Two salaries.
Twenty-three thousand in salary, doesn't matter. And five thousand in-
Yeah, in an enterprise account, it's just a body-
Yeah, that's right, it's, it doesn't matter, that's right. So that'd be a total cut of $13,000 from, from the Sewer Department, recommended by the Public Service Committee.
Mayor Nicholson?
Thank you, Madam President. Just to point out as well, as I said in my email to the council, line 838, repairs and maintenance for the Sewer Department, there was a typographical error in this that resulted in a $20,000 reduction in that line item that was not meant to be there, that is allocated in this budget that's before the council here. And amended money order has been prepared by the city auditor for that purpose as well.
Thank you, Mayor Nicholson. Before we take a straw vote on the $13,000 proposed cut, is there any questions, comments from the council? Okay, a yes vote will reduce the budget by $13,000, a no vote will keep it as is. Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Durrell Louts?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Bujo?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
Yes.
I vote yes, that's 10 yeses on that vote. Any further questions, comments from the council? Okay, page 18, line items 866 through 916. Any proposed cuts or comments from the committee chairs? Counselor Walsh?
Yes, from the Water Department, we have three proposed cuts. The first is line item 901, account number 51102, working out of grade for the same reasons that we explained in the Sewer Department budget, we, the committee recommends a cut of $3,000. On line item 909, account number 52150, Communications, the committee recommended a cut of $5,000. That cuts it in half, the, from the proposed budget, the, the amount that would be encumbered plus the, the net amount, if it's, if we cut 5,000, would be more than sufficient according to the director, and, for his needs. And account number, the next item, nine, account number, line item 910, account number 52151, we recommend cutting $7,500 from the telecommunications account. It's basically cut it in half, based upon the history of usage of, of these funds over the course of several years, and the balance of what would be encumbered in the many truces to do that, would be sufficient for the next fiscal year. So the total amount from Water Department, recommended cuts by the Service Committee is $15,500.
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions, comments from the committee before we take a straw vote on the proposed Okay, a yes vote will reduce the budget by $15,500, a no vote will keep it as is. Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Durrell Louts?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Bujo?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, that's 10 yeses, zero noes. Any further questions, comments on page 18? Okay, page 19, line numbers 917 through 967, any proposed cuts from the, or comments from the standing committee chair? Any questions or comments from the city council? Moving on to page 21, line numbers 1019 through 1067, proposed cuts or comments from the standing committee chairs? Any questions, comments from the council? And page 22, line number 1068 through 1073, any questions, comments from the council? Okay, that completes the page-by-page review of the budget. Does anyone have anything further to comment on the topic of tonight's informal meeting? Thank you, Mayor Nicholson. Thank you, Auditor Richard. Counselor Walsh?
One other thing, I, I assume that at our regular meeting, when it comes to the item of the submission of the proposed budget that will substitute the revised budget from the mayor, and the revised money order for Sewer Enterprise.
With the $20,000?
The $20,000 added, which we received, I think, from the city auditor earlier today.
Yes.
I just think, before we cut, we need to substitute those for the what was submitted.
We can, we can-
Thank you.
Plan to do that. Thank you, Counselor Walsh.
Madam President?
Mayor Nicholson?
Thank you. Auditor Richard has also set to pending the votes of the straw polls today, draft amended money orders, too, that after that one is submitted into, that way the money orders that are signed by the council president, I heard the budget procedures listed in the city charter are reflective of the amounts that are actually approved, and the numbers that are, follow the cuts made by the city council.
Thank you, Mayor Nicholson. We do.
One last thing. Will we have the revised numbers available for tonight's meeting?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilor. We, for the public watching this evening, we will have our regular meeting at seven thirty. The money orders that the council votes on for the budget are on our council calendar for this evening, and so they are to be considered later on this evening at that meeting. This meeting, again, just served the purpose to go through after the weeks of meetings and the time we've had to study and analyze the budget. I'd like to thank all of the standing committees and standing committee chairs for scheduling your meetings in a timely manner and doing a thorough job meeting with department heads. Thank you to Council Walsh for submitting his cuts to us in the mental that he did. That was certainly helpful, and if there, are there any other further comments on the topic of tonight's formal meeting? Any questions? Okay, hearing nothing, we will close this part of the meeting and reconvene at seven thirty for our regular meeting. Thank you, everyone.